Hello, everyone, and we can welcome to the city council meeting at six P M. Tuesday, June seventeenth. We're gonna go ahead and say a prayer. And then the pledge.
Thank you, Lord, again for our beautiful city. Thank you, Lord, that your hand is on us and that you are protecting us. Thank you, Lord, for giving us wisdom, and if we don't have it yet, I thank you for the wisdom that's gonna come. Lord, just be with everyone here, be with our law enforcement, be with our firemen, be with everyone in our city. Lord, I ask that you also be with them and give them the wisdom so that we can all come together to make this city absolutely the best it can be. We love you and we thank you in advance for all you're gonna do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Alright, the regular agenda is called the order. Council, have you had time to review the minutes?
I have.
There's, the floor is open for the item.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, June third, twenty twenty five, and June twelfth, twenty twenty five.
I do have a question, sorry. Do we need to add, or is it already in there, that Carl came late and was part of the executive last week? Okay. A second.
Madam Secretary, please record the vote.
Yes. Aye.
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 Alright, that item is closed. We're gonna move on to item number two, public comments. The city council welcomes citizen participation and comments at all city council members. Citizens comment at limit, are limited to two minutes out of the respect for everyone's time. The council is not permitted to respond to your comments. The Texas Open Meetings Act requires the topics of discussion deliberation be posted on the agenda not less than seventy-two hours in advance of the city council. If your comments relate to the topics that are in the agenda, the council will discuss the topic of the agenda at that time the topic is discussed and deliberated. Any public comment? Go ahead, Debbie.
I'll just say this, I'd like to remind everyone that the Juneteenth Festival is going to be this Saturday at Oakmont Park. And I believe the parade starts at ten o'clock. It will last till ten P M. I think there's also gonna be softball tournaments. There'll be vendors there, and it's a good event for everyone. It's a good time to share the unity and the camaraderie that we have in this city and to be supportive of each other and to stand up and make a difference and show the community really who we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public, public comments sections at this time, and we'll move on to the next item. The next item is item number three, monthly financial report for month end, May twenty, May thirty first, twenty twenty five, with Jillian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we have our monthly report for May. May is two-thirds of the way through, so sixty-six point seven percent of the way through the fiscal year. And so if we look at our general fund, we see property tax is right, right on track where it should be. Percentage-wise, it's slightly different from last year, but it's right where it should be. Overall, the sales tax, we saw last month at the end of the presentation, is still slightly behind, and we'll see that a little more in a second on the graphs. And we are looking at ways where we can take care of that as well and make sure that we're not behind overall. We see year-to-date percentage, we're seventy-one point three percent, and last year we were at seventy point three. So we're one percent better for budget, and it's above the sixty-six point seven. So we're doing good there. Here's the property tax graph. It's real hard to see that little May a little bit, because it's just so low compared to the December, January, February range. But it is right where we should be overall for the full year. It's within, I believe, within a percent of being right on track with budget, so it's right on track. Here's the sales tax graph that we saw at the end last month. We see May is not quite all the way up to the bars where prior years and where budget are, we are looking at what we can do to remedy that. Then we move over to the expense side, and we see most of them are right on track where they should be. A few of them look a little weird. The tax assessment and collection, that's the check that we received last month from the tax assessor. That offsets those, and so it looks weird being a negative there, but it's right, what it should be. The election, that's of course for the May election, so it takes up a lot of its budget and gets it over, but we should not have anything else in that department. Animal services looks a little high, but that's because of the A C repair that had to be done. And then fleet services, ongoing automotive things that were just a little bit high. But overall, the general fund is at sixty-two point three percent for expenses, which is of course less than the seventy-one, and it's less than the sixty-six point seven. So we're doing good there, and we have an overall excess for the fund. Then we move over to the utility fund. Its revenues are right where they should be. It's sixty-six point eight for the fund, sixty-six point seven through the year. So we're doing good there. Last year, we're better than that as well by about three percent. So we're doing good on their revenues. Over on the expense side, most of the departments look alright. The freshwater supply, that's two months' payments in that month, so it's double what it typically is. And then the debt service, we had all those pay, most of our debt, debt service payments come out last month as well, which in turn made the fund have a deficit for the year, but that should be made up because these debt service payments are so large. They just take a lot from the month. Our expenditures for the fund are at seventy-one point one percent compared to last year at sixty-six point seven. And here's our sales tax that we received just this past week. Still behind budget, a little bit better closer to last year's actuals, and of course, we are looking at what we can do to remedy that. And if you have any questions.
You have said before, but remind me and the people, what makes up the debt services? You know, that you said you paid out. What kinda?
So our debt service payments, it's gonna be payments for all of our bonds, for the water, for the wastewater, for the parks. For all the different bonds we have, these are the ongoing payments to cover those.
Can, can you tell me, I know the sports complex bond, can you, are we close to the term on that? I can't remember, I think it was ten years or fifteen, whatever. Someone had told me the other day, we should be within a couple of years, so I just wondered if you knew or read on that.
I'm not a hundred percent if it's that bond specifically, but I know one bond is having the last payment next fiscal year. I know one of ours is getting finalized out next year. I'm not, I think it might be that one, but I'm not a hundred percent on it.
Jillian, just a couple of questions. So can we make, we, you find that out and just send a, we'll just send a note to all the council members on that particular bond issue? So just wanted to be clear, so when you talk about debt service, so we don't pay those in twelve monthly installments, is that correct? Or do we pay them monthly? So if we see one that's at ninety-six percent on the payment side, it's gonna be going over, or have we paid some ahead? I was thinking I saw that over on the utility side.
So it's, the debt service department is at ninety-eight point six. We have one more bond issuance that has a payment in September, and that is the last of those. All of the others have been paid, and I believe the September one, I mean, relative to the four, five million budget, it's not big, so it should bring us right to a hundred percent.
Thank you. So that was, that was what I was looking at my question, because we talk about being at sixty-six percent one-third, and that was at ninety-eight percent. And so, again, thank you for that answer. So we basically paid it off, except for one more. Thank you.
Just a quick question about the police department, the automotive stuff. Is that like maintenance or lease, or what were the expenses there?
I believe it was an outfit for a vehicle.
Thank you.
I could just make one last comment. Just, I think, I think it's important when we look at these, so, you know, you can look at total revenues and it shows you it's seventy-one percent, which seems to be really good, but that's because you get all your property tax ahead of time. So that's in the ninety percentile, and so our sales tax is running. Probably we're looking somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars less than what we projected. So she calmly and quietly says, we're working on it. We're gonna have to spend some very serious time in the next two weeks to make sure that if reductions are necessary, that we recommend that to the city council. But the first thing we'll do, and I'll be focused on it here in the next two weeks, or we will, is just get a good line on all those revenue sources. Because, you know, your permit numbers come into play, liquor sales come into play, all of those things come into place. You really wanna look at them overall. But a five-hundred and six-hundred thousand dollar deficit means, hopefully, we can find that savings or already have those savings within the department expenditures. But the goal is at the end of this year, the revenues at least are no, are more or the same as the expenditure. And we'll be back to you if there's some actions we need to take. Thank you.
What is our, what is our lease agreement? How much is our lease a year for the vehicles, you know?
I do not know that number offhand. It is in a separate fund. It's in the capital replacement fund, and so it's not reflected in the general fund numbers.
I hate to interrupt that, but I, I think the chief knows the answer to that, so I think we better get that answer right now, because it's a good question.
Our current lease payment fluctuates somewhere between forty-eight and forty-nine thousand dollars a month. We, we budgeted for fifty thousand a month or six hundred thousand dollars in that account, and so right now we're projecting to be within budget on that account. Yeah, I think it was six hundred thousand dollars with that account funded for.
So Chief, is the maintenance part of those lease agreements?
No, the maintenance is a separate account. You're talking about, so our mechanics work out of a separate account. That is just the lease payment. So we have some vehicles that we own that we repair. Most of the lease vehicles are all, not all of them are under warranty, but some, several of them are, so those, but those, when they're repaired, that comes out of a separate account that is over in the, I think it, it.
Garrett, you remember what it's called?
Fleet services budget.
You know, Garrett, do you know, does anyone know exactly how many vehicles we own as opposed to how many were leasing?
I could have told you that a couple of months ago. I have, I have a spreadsheet that has every single vehicle. We, we, we do track when we know every vehicle and piece of equipment that's in a spreadsheet. I think we releasing, it was sixty-five at the beginning of the year. I think we're down to like fifty-nine. I don't know about ownership.
The ones we own are the big utility trucks and a couple of large items like that, but most of the normal crew trucks there in the lease program.
Yeah, we do, we still own some pickup trucks as well that are still in service, just a handful of those. Most of it's larger equipment, though, with the equipment that's been put onto those trucks.
Hey Chief, when we lease these cars, do we have to take the expense for, for outfitting them?
So, yes. When we lease a vehicle, the way the contract is set up with enterprise, the upfitting on a vehicle like a police vehicle, so a patrol Tahoe, the outfit is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. We have to upfront pay fourteen of that, half, fifty percent of that, and then fourteen percent of it is put into the lease monthly payment. So it's, it's financed basically through enterprise and it's part of that lease payment. So, but we have to do come up with half of that upfront cost. So la, last year when Mr. Niall was here, the first time, we had a, like, in, on the police side, we had one of our vehicles go down. We constantly were repairing it, so we decided to go purchase a vehicle rather than do another lease. But we had to come up with, it was twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to do that outfit, so we had to come up with half of it.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was leaning to, is when these leases are over, are we able to buy them out if they're still good vehicles?
So technically, the way the contract works is we cannot purchase the vehicles from enterprise. They have to put them at their auctions that they sell. We just receive, receive the residual from those vehicles. That's technically how it works. If the lease, in the end, we pay the vehicle off, then we just continue to pay a management fee, but we keep the vehicle in use until it's at time which is gonna be sold, then it goes back to them.
Thanks, Chief.
And I will say this, and I know police and fire vehicles don't fit in the same category as everybody else's, but when we were in there, and I worked here, we kept vehicles eighteen years. I mean, CODO has had some that were ten to fifteen, eighteen years. The crew trucks, some of them were several years old. Are we, are we really benefiting from this lease program, especially on the department that could keep vehicles for years and years and years?
So in my first round here, as Chief would put it, we've had a lot of conversation, and one important part's about getting out of your leases is you've got money to buy new ones. And so we were watching the budget to see what it looked like before we did that. There was a point in time, I don't know what year it started, that the city made a decision to basically lease all the, I'll call them regular-sized vehicles. And so there's leases, six hundred thousand dollars worth of leases. I do not think that that is the way forward, that we continue doing that. But certainly, one of the main components of that is how do we fund these purchases? So as the chief says, one came up, we can buy one, but when you start talking the number of vehicles actually in the fleet, it's quite a bit of money. So we'll come back to you in part of the budget and talk about how we can, I think, get out of this program. And Chief will tell you, and he's been in my office a number of times, saying it was a good decision at the time because it was actually paying for itself, or profitable, shall we say, and lease rates have changed such that it's not anymore. And so I think we certainly, he's always saying, can I have a couple hundred thousand, and I tell him, no, not yet. And, but it's something we definitely need to look at as part of this budget, is try to invest in new vehicles. As you say, many should be lasting ten years. Police, police vehicles are gonna give you four years max probably, and, and that's gonna be it. But public works, code enforcement, a lot of those can last longer, but now they're under leases that are four years, short-term, and get changed out. Thank you.
And just as an effort to bring down that lease payment, we have done, I guess I've been doing the fleet for maybe about a year and a half. What we've done is we have returned the newest vehicles, and we have kept the older vehicles. The lease payments were lower. As we came out of COVID, the government pricing rebates went away. And so those older vehicles were much more affordable monthly than the newer vehicles. So as we've reduced vehicles, we've reduced the newest vehicles. And we've kept those older ones that eventually we won't have to make lease payments anymore. We'll just, it'll be a, a management fee as those are paid off. And so that's been one of our efforts in a way to reduce that monthly payment is to get rid of those newer vehicles that cost us more each month.
When you refer to management fee, are you saying that once we pay for the vehicle, that we're still stuck with a management fee somewhere?
Yes. I think it's, I think it's twenty dollars a month per vehicle. That's part of the original contract that was signed with them four, four or five years ago.
Thank you for letting us put you on the spot, Chief. Appreciate it. Any public comments?
Hey Greg, on the, the capital project summary, I mean, I have a status that kinda says whether it's in progress or engineering. I have a status that kinda says whether it's in progress, or engineering only, or not started. Is there any chance?
I don't know how hard it would be technically, um, to, to like, show a proposed, or estimated completion date, or something on there also? I just don't know how things, the tables are set up technically, but, just-
I think that would be super helpful, because it's one thing to say it hasn't started or not started, and then you kinda have to guess by the price, while I'm assuming it's good.
Um, I was gonna tell you, so I haven't got through all of this, um, in detail, but I think your, uh, question is, um, something we, we need to consider, how we might be able to do that. I think she's shaking her head, yeah, we can do that.
Yes, I can, I can get with, uh, Aaron and all the people to see, I can get start dates and projected end dates for each of the projects.
Even if it's just the end date, I mean, start date's great, love to have both, but at a minimum, if we could at least get, when's this thing done? I think that would help, at least not coming, you know, you got nineteen projects here, and various, you know, like, various stages, and so you just, it's hard to tell. So awesome.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that council member, something that I think we need to do, I was gone for a couple of months, I have to re, re, um, kinda look at these, but I think that for the new me- members, and for all of you, kind of a project overview update on all of them would be something we could do here in the next month, month and a half.
That sounds great, thanks Greg.
Thanks again, Gillian.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? Anybody online? All right, we'll go ahead and close that, and move on to the next item. And the next item is to consider and possibly approve IDC, EDC fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget amendments with Janet.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. So this request is to consider and possibly approve the budget amendment for this fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, um, in the amount of five hundred thousand. And this was for the project, uh, Elixir Pro, or Lumens Corporation, that was approved that Thursday's city council meeting, June twelfth.
Anyone have any questions? So this is money you have in an account somewhere, we're gonna move it over, that's what we're saying.
Yes, sir, so it will come from the fund balance carryover into the economic development commitment account.
Since this has to do with that project, can you update us as to when the announcement or something would do affect council? When we can expect to hear that, such good news?
Yes, ma'am, so I was expecting it on Monday, I called them, and they were working on it, and then I called them today. They're still working on it, they told me they would have something to me either tonight or tomorrow, so I'm hoping to be able to share that tomorrow. Yes, I wanna go ahead and say thank you again to everybody for the support. I did have one of the gentlemen's, um, he was talking to me at dinner, and he said, you know, we usually do a lot of transactions. He's from New York, he said, we do these every day, he said, but this one felt different. So I wanna say thank you to all of you for making that happen.
Thank you, Janet, I know it was a lot of hard work for all y'all, a lot of hours, it's, we, we probably got a small portion of it, or at least I did. Debbie's on both the council and EDC, so she gets to double dip on the hour. Thanks, Steve, wherever you are. Any other questions? Public comment? All right, floor is open for this item.
Mayor. So this is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twelve that shall be approved. Twenty-twenty-five dash twelve.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash twelve to transfer the five hundred thousand, uh, to the line item requested.
I second the motion. Motion's made, Madam Secretary, please record the vote.
Aye.
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 I need to recuse myself from this one.
Yeah.
All right, the item's closed, and we'll move on to item number six on the agenda. Consider pay request number one for Drake Paving LLC for work performed at Mount Pleasant Regional Airport Southwest Site Development and Drainage Improvements with Paul. Sorry. Item number five, discuss and consider ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, updating user fees for the civic center.
Afternoon, council. Oh, I'm Justin Beard, the civic center manager, and community center manager as well.
May for coming in?
Uh, so, I, what I think, what we are trying to propose, um, is a discounted for nonprofit organizations, uh, five oh one C threes. I think I, you guys got, um, a couple, uh, things from, we had a board meeting, uh, so, based on that recommendation, they're trying to get a discount for nonprofit organizations.
I looked at all your, your reports, and thank you for all the detailed information. And, uh, I did look at the minutes, and I did look at their suggestion, and I thought that was truly generous. I appreciate your work.
Honestly, I think it's a, a great thing, and, um, you know, I think it's a great, great recommendation from the board, so, in my opinion, it'd be awesome if it gets passed.
Any audience comment?
Uh, yeah, well, I ha- I have a question about it, uh, and, you know, I know we're looking to give a discount, and I think that's, that's great. At the same time, I know, I think last time we discussed this, um, just curious, and I'm expecting Greg to jump in here potentially. Um, like, like how are we running, um, in terms of cost-wise, based on our, our, you know, basically our pricing over the last few years? You know, I, I, how much of a deficit, if any, are we running on the, uh, the civic center?
Right now, I'm still trying to one-hundred percent get that, because I know we do get, uh, tax from hotel motel. Um, so that's contributing to, uh, a lot of what, uh, revenue that we see. Um, and that, the document that you guys should have, it kinda gives a breakdown, and it shows, uh, exactly how much it costs, you know, to run the building. Uh, now, keep in mind, um, wherever it does have the amounts, uh, for staffing and everything, that includes like, health, all insurance, retirement, uh, it includes everything in there.
So, a question that somebody had, I, I know the answer to it, but you may just wanna talk about it, is, is, is the building paid off?
Uh, I'm, I'm assuming so, yes, yes.
All right. And I, I saw the detailed report too, on the, on the expenses and everything, and, I mean, y'all did a lot of work, I appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I think the building was constructed in the seventies, so I think we're, we're good to go. Yeah, yes.
Well, just to follow that, I know we have, uh, I think some repairs or something we're doing, I saw it on the capital budget, like seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Are y'all doing anything to the civic center right now?
I'm not aware of that.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna go jog my memory for one second to answer that question. If I recall, that was part of the bond issue, that said seven hundred thousand dollars would be used at the civic center to, um, do work in the bathrooms. And I think that, I'm, I'm pretty sure we got that fixed for less than a hundred thousand dollars. And so, um, we, we were, we did not need to use those funds, uh, for that project.
We, we got the restroom fixed for well under that, I think it was about twenty thousand dollars. We did get a, a bond for a hundred thousand, but if you guys have noticed, there's, we put that new marquee out there. Uh, if you guys have seen it, it's a really nice marquee, brand new. Uh, so yeah, we've done a lot of, uh, little updates as well, like the camera system needed to be updated. Um, so yeah, there's, there's quite a few updates that we've done.
Yeah, I know somebody did mention the, uh, lions in the parking lot, they were worried about, you know, when those were gonna get taken care of, so it'd be a little bit easier to park.
It's already done.
Good job, all right. And then when was the last rate increase for our rate?
It was, um, two thousand?
That's awesome, okay.
Well, le- le- I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. We just did, uh, updated from the rate plans, um, about a year ago. Before then, I'm sorry, it was two thousand, so it was over twenty years before we've done, uh, updating rate plans.
I totally understand, civic center's gotta pay for itself, and we gotta raise the rates to survive. I think it's re- really important that we support these organizations that want the discount. I mean, they do so much for the county and the city, and hospice, the county fair, CASA, th- those folks work really hard, and they do things that's really for our citizens, so let's keep that in mind too.
Absolutely, I one-hundred percent agree.
I'll be the Scrooge on this conversation. Um, so I don't have, I mean, obviously, it would be zero if we could, for all the nonprofits, and, and we self-funded it. So, um, we did pull out what it looks like for the last three years of the operating expenses, so, you know, one of the big issues, we, one of the big, um, funding sources for the civic center is the hotel tax, and this is kind of, uh, a symptom of our economy in the city, uh, throughout, which is why everybody needs to support local business. That, um, those revenues out of hotel tax have, uh, dropped. Um, they were eight hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty-three, they went to seven seventy-seven in twenty-four. They're running at, um, nine months, at four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And the, the civic center has run a deficit, um, in twenty-twenty-three of a hundred thousand, in twenty-twenty-four, a hundred and twenty thousand, and right now, it's running a deficit of ninety-three thousand. And I, what my question would be is, is in making this analysis, I know it's not all about money, it's just a matter of shifting the funds over from the general fund to make this meet, but did you do anything in regards to looking at all the nonprofits that have rented in the past, and what that total revenue is, and then taking thirty percent off of that, to see what the decline in revenue would look like? It might be in here, but I didn't get, I did, I skimmed through it.
Um, we, we do a lot of events, um, and as far as the nonprofit events that we do have at the civic center, uh, is probably about twenty percent of, um, what we do. I mean, if you take the, the fair association, you know, they're there for a week, uh, COGIC, they're there for a week. Um, so I mean, those are a, a couple larger events that we do have, but, um, like I said, they're probably about, you know, twenty percent of, of what we do. Uh, maybe even a little less.
This past month, moms mentoring militaries, they went somewhere else, so we lost a hundred percent of that. I spoke with some other nonprofits this week, and they're all looking to go somewhere else if they don't get a discount. I mean, they're just trying to do what's best for them, I think with a little discount, we can keep everybody.
Yeah, no, I agree, um, now, to kinda counter some of that, like, we, whenever we do, um, lose, there's, we did lose the, the MOM, and then the one other one was in Iron Mountain Powerlifting. Uh, those are the two that I found that we have lost, and it was definitely unfortunate to, to lose the M, MOM, because it, it, not only it's a, a great event to, to work for us as staff, but I mean, it's just a, a great organization on what they do.
I was just gonna ask, are they Titus County, or are they Mount Pleasant? Where are they out of?
I know, I know Kelly, Kelly's out of, yeah. And then they moved, uh, this year to Mount Vernon, I believe is where they did their, their mark.
The event moved to Mount Vernon?
Yes, sir.
So-
Yeah, I agree.
If I could just, I, it's, I, I apologize, I'm not caught up on everything yet, on being back. So Gillian, I'm looking at the sheet of revenues from leases and rentals, which is, is the rental fees we're talking about. And so, it looks like rental fees in twenty-three was seventy-seven thousand, uh, twenty-twenty-four is a hundred and seven thousand, and we're at sixty-four right now. So basically, we can say from rentals and leases, it's a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm gonna really, I hope not embarrass myself, but if we give a thirty percent discount on twenty percent, I'm, I'm thinking that it's probably between ten and fifteen thousand dollars is all it is. So, I, I don't wanna, it's a policy decision that you're making, but as I look at this, that's not gonna be a really big number. And that's the one thing I would wanna know, really, to say, be able to tell you, if I do the math and say, give thirty percent discounts, and twenty percent of the rentals are for nonprofits, um, I'm looking at these numbers thinking it's ten thousand or less. Um, so, um, that's, I would just say that's not a big number to, to come up with out of the general fund budget.
All right, the floor is open for the item, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, to vote on ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, updating user fees for the civic center, um, proposing thirty percent, uh, as the, uh, civic center board had proposed.
I second.
Madam Sec-
I'm sorry, council, could, the thirty percent is a discount just on the nonprofit five oh C three, is that right? Okay.
To add, for nonprofits.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, can we record the vote?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you. All right, we'll close that item, and then we'll move on to number six. Consider pay request for Drake Paving LLC for work performed at Mount Pleasant Regional Airport Southwest Site Development and Drainage Improvement with Paul.
Mayor, council, I, I'm Paul Henderson, I'm the airport manager. And we've been three years getting to this point, that we could start this construction work at the airport, and, uh, and we're tickled that it's happening. Uh, I just wanted to, just real quick, there is fifteen corporate hangars on the field. Excuse me, fourteen. We've got one lot left to lease. What we're building is the area to do fifteen more. So that has brought us twenty-three years down the road, and we're gonna double the size of it, so we're tickled about that. Uh, Drake Paving is our contractor on this job, they're doing a really good job, they're, they've already moved sixty-something thousand yards of dirt, and the, the project is, is looking good, the, yeah, you can, you can see it there. Uh, anyway, the, uh, and of course, they've put a request in for their first, uh, pay request, for roughly two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
You're just way too humble, sir. I mean, the airport is great, I see you, um, you built Lake Henderson, is that right? You're, you named that pond after yourself, or has there been a little bit of rain?
But they're, they're actually filling that in, pumping it out, and fill it in as we speak right now, yeah.
So I do think that it's important- So I do think that it's important to note, um, how this is getting paid for. Is it from the general fund or how is this, this project being paid for?
This thing is, there's, there's two, we're getting, uh, non-primary entitlement funds, uh, from Texas Aviation. The tune is six hundred thousand and we're getting a million dollars for, from a infrastructure grant. And the, the really great thing about this, this was a ninety-ten project, so it was costing us ten cents on the dollar. But, uh, the FAA came back and changed the, uh, infrastructure grant, the, the million dollar grant, uh, from ninety-ten to ninety-five-five, so that's good for us. We turn all these in and, uh, and request reimbursement and then they reimburse our money back, except our five percent or our, right now this first part of each ten percent.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I got one over here. Paul, how are you doing today, sir? Uh, so lots of progress, uh, that we're all seeing. If the rain holds out and all, all things are blowing in the right direction, when do you think we would, uh, be able to start putting buildings and leasing these out?
Soon, I hope, because we, we've got three lots spoke for. Now, they haven't signed their lease yet, but, uh, but that's encouraging. And, uh, this is a hundred and twenty day project. So we've already done one month, we've got three months to go. So we're gonna tell the contractor, hey, you got three months. The rain has really, uh, slowed them up some, so. But we're gonna get it done the best part of the year, which is gonna be great because it's, in Texas, it will turn off dry.
Awesome. No, appreciate it, Paul. Thanks.
Just want to make sure you're clear. So you're talking that, that contract is for paving and everything? So you'll have all the, um, concrete, asphalt, all is done in four months?
For what's in this project, yes. The, uh, there's actually two taxiways to this. The, the first one, the one that goes in front of what's everybody knows is the Old Pilgrim Hangers and Preford Hangers, that direction south, and it's roughly seven hundred and fifty feet long, that taxiway. And then to the west of that, there'll be an access road, which will be concrete. That'll be built at this time. Now, will we finish the other taxiway and the other, uh, access road? Not now. This infrastructure grant, this is the first phase of it. There's six hundred thousand more coming for this, but, uh, it's not part of this project. So right now we will do one taxiway, the access road. It's gonna look like half of it's built is what it's gonna, the, the dirt work for the most part will all be in place. So it's, it's a matter of doing some more dirt work, a little more dirt work and doing, adding other taxi.
Mayor, I'm, I'm talking way too much. Maybe I'm trying to get back from the two months that I was off or something. I just want to say that, um, Paul is one of the best in this airport. If there's something this community needs to be super proud of, it's that airport that we have. And that it doesn't, it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money for that. And it brings in certainly people flying in, doing business in our community. And so I want to commend Paul because, um, again, he finds the funding from other sources to expand the airport. Three new leases not signed yet, but certainly, uh, letters of interest. And I just want to commend you, Paul, publicly. Um, and I welcome certainly new council members, but if you haven't been out there, Paul will take you on whatever tour necessary. Because it is a, one of those gems that not many people know that exist here. But it's a, a great asset for economic development for us. So thank you, Paul.
I agree. Um, like Greg said, but, um, I remember last year during our budget workshop, I came away going, oh my gosh, the airport's profitable. Instead of hearing all the negative, it was like you were doing great. So how's it holding up so far this year?
We squeak by. I mean, do we make a lot of money? No. But we don't cost a lot of money either. So that's the good thing about it. But I want to mention somebody that, that needs mentioning. And this is years back, twenty-five years ago, and that's the IDC. If it wasn't for their help to get started, we wouldn't have this airport. Toby Abney was, was big in it and I, I can't remember all the people. I've been with the city twenty-three years this month. The airport, come August, will have been there twenty-three years. So, uh, it's, it's really grown. We're, we've got a hundred and forty-one aircraft on the field. And nobody can compare it to us, you know, and I've had people say, well, you don't have as many jets as Tyler or Longview. And we don't. But we, we'll take the six we've got and the other hundred and thirty-something aircraft, we've got more than any other neighboring airport, including Longview or Tyler or Texan. And to me, that is amazing for a small municipal airport. Uh, and it's really grown.
Paul, if we get councilmen to go out and visit, can you get us a ride in the biplane?
You, you know, that's one of those deals, you gotta be at the right place at the right time. I'll do my best, though.
Questions or comments from the public? All right, the floor is open for the item.
I make a motion, uh, to consider pay request, number one, for Drake Paving, for work performed on the Mount Pleasant Regional Airport, Southwest Site Development and Drainage Improvement.
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you take the vote?
Aye.
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 Yes.
All right, motion is unanimous and, uh, we'll go ahead and close the item on this agenda and move to item number seven. Uh, item number seven, hold a public hearing for the city's unsafe building abatement code found in chapter one-five-zero of code. For the code ordinances and to consider a declaration of dilapidated structure at five oh eight Haggard Avenue within the city of Mount Pleasant, Texas. Find it to be dilapidated and deteriorated and damaged so as to require repair, rehabilitation or demolition, providing a time within which the owner should rehabilitate, repair or demolish such structures to consider ordering city abatement and subsequently lean on the dilapidated structure at five oh eight Haggard Avenue, Anderson Block D, Lot Five. So we will open the public hearing now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so before I get started on this case, uh, this actually came May sixth. And I think this half of the room wasn't here, it was just these three. And the way the orders were written up, it required four votes and we only had three council members here. So I have to bring it back, uh, because, uh, we didn't have enough people here to pass the vote. Uh, the orders have been corrected now, it doesn't, um, give it a, an amount of people that have to pass the vote. It just says it passed now, um, so that the orders won't be affected moving forward in those types of situations. So on this particular one, it's, uh, five oh eight Haggard. Just to kind of go over the, the process again, it's, uh, dictated in city code ordinances, chapter one-fifty and also the, uh, chapter two-fourteen of local government code. Uh, we, as staff, identify properties, send property owners notices. The owners either contact us or if they don't, um, then we go ahead and start tagging the homes. Uh, and basically turn them over to this, uh, process here, bring it before you guys. And then you guys make a decision on, uh, what we do with the home. Uh, if you decide to demolish it, um, the home will be demolished thirty days after you guys give the order. We will bill them for the demo. If they don't pay it, then we'll leave the property. So this particular property is at five oh eight Haggard, it's burned down, it's probably been burned for two or three years. Uh, the homeowner is Opal Standard, she's deceased. Um, so she's no longer around. I have made contact with her brother who lives in Dallas, his name is Cedric Standard. And basically he's been trying to sell the home to somebody, trying to get them to demo it. He doesn't want to pay to demo it. And, uh, he knows the meeting's tonight, he just told me to send him a copy of the orders, whatever you guys decide. And then we'll move forward with that. So this is the particular house, it's been burned out, it's been tagged, uh, it's pretty much destroyed at this point, it just has to come down. And this is a public hearing.
Mayor, you can end the public hearing at this point and see if there's anyone here to speak on behalf of this matter.
Okay, I, I opened it before the comment. Is that, okay, is there anyone that needs to comment or would like to comment on it?
You can close the public hearing.
All right, thank you all. And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. All right, uh, last item here, item number eight. All right, the floor is open for this item. I will need a motion. I make a motion to declare the building at five oh eight Haggard Avenue substandard and order it to be demolished by the owner within thirty days and to authorize abatement by the city after the time according to procedures in the city ordinance and state statute.
I second.
Madam Secretary, please record the vote.
Aye.
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 Yes.
All right, the item passed and we will now close this item on the agenda. And move to item number eight, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, just a couple of comments. One, I want to just congratulate the Downtown Merchants, Main Street. Certainly the staff members for a great event on Saturday. I understand it was, uh, one of the best we've had there. And that is a culmination of a lot of work between all of those people in there to, again, bring more people into our downtown areas, more shoppers, uh, more people that live here enjoying, um, their, each other's company. And so, uh, I just want to congratulate, um, those, all those who put time in. And, um, the person that has been doing it for the city, uh, moved to a different position. So I want to specifically call out Candace and Garrett, who kind of took that on themselves to be the liaisons there. So there's a lot more events and certainly we want to make sure those get, um, published. And we keep wanting them to grow and grow and grow and make this downtown lively. I always hear about somebody else's downtown, but it's time we, uh, keep doing what we're doing, which is growing our downtown presence and events for our community and for those who visit. Uh, I just want to zoom in on, um, the budget process. That, um, I will spend the next two weeks, uh, the staff have turned in their budgets, the directors. We'll start looking at those at the same time. We need, we're gonna take a good, hard look at all the projected revenues, where we are today, where we anticipate being and then where we anticipate expenditures being. So that will be a very heavy load the next couple of weeks. One thing that I want to just again say to Council, and I'm assuming it's something you wanted to do for months, even while I was here, and that is the goal setting prior to deciding on your budget. And so I, I am, um, welcoming anybody who might have an idea for a facilitator, somebody who maybe works for a company or a nonprofit or something, that maybe can do that. I have not ever done specifically the facilitating, I'm happy if we don't do that. But sometimes it's better to have somebody with us doing that. But we should be, um, looking forward to mid-July to try to, um, put something together. So certainly council members, uh, again, welcome a return. I, actually what I'll do is I will send out the list that we did back when I was here before. But we have to do that this time. And why we do that, obviously, is to focus limited amounts of funds on priorities. And then secondly, it focuses the, the, our team's work, um, load. So that we're focused on what the City Council has made for goals for the community and certainly want the community's input too. So I would say what we're looking at is mid-July. And certainly if you've got some ideas for someone or think that's a good idea to try to facilitate, I'd be happy to have you just let me know, send me an email or something that lets me know that. I think that you got a pretty good report, we talked a lot about where the finances were. And now it's just a matter of really trying to narrow those down so that in the next two to three weeks, hopefully at the next council meeting, I can give you some projected looks and a little better opinion on where I think we're gonna be and what we're might be looking at. I do, will say that, uh, the revenue coming in for next year, based on information and talking to people in the community, whether it's sales tax or property movements, uh, as far as sales of new homes and homes. Um, we're not gonna be seeing a whole lot of new revenue from, uh, new business. So we're gonna have to look at a budget very similar or even a little less than what we've, uh, done in this past year. So we say, uh, buckle up, here we go again, but it won't be like last time when we had to cut over a million dollars worth of expenditures just to get back to a balanced budget. And I'll commend the Council from last year too, as unbalance is, uh, in good shape. The audit, um, I was kind of, um, I wasn't happy that it wasn't done yet. For last fiscal year ending September thirty. And so Jillian's been talking to the auditors, we expect something within the next five to six days from them. And then we will be getting that to you as soon as we possibly can at a regular meeting. But again, that just tells us how we ended last year. And if we have things that we need to continue fixing within the books of the city, we just need to continue doing that. So look forward to that. I want to say, I spent a couple, I had a couple of EDC meetings because I'm an ex-officio member and Councilmember Corbell has been at all of them and the mayor was at them. Just want to congratulate the, the city and the EDC on moving forward together. And, uh, there was a proposal to do some strategic planning and understanding the roles of each, the EDC, uh, and the city and how we work together. And, uh, the board approved that moving forward. And so that will be something that includes all of you as well. Uh, I thought that the presentation was very good and its intentions are great. And it's just another step in clearing up what hasn't been a great past, including, um, my attendance in that too. So really excited about that, really excited about how far you've come in the relationship since when I left two months ago. And I want to congratulate you on that and, and the EDC board members as well that are here. So great, um, movement forward when it comes to economic development for our community. Um, so with that, I think I'll, um, say goodnight. Thank you.
All right, uh, something the city manager had suggested, which we don't have to put anybody on the spot tonight, but he was suggesting at the end of the meetings, maybe each of us, if we want to, to take a minute or two just to talk about what we did, um, you know, the week before, the, you know, the couple of weeks before. I know just from being here that with all the different groups, it, it really does seem like we're all on the same page. It, it is all, we're doing everything we can for the city. And, uh, we appreciate y'all's patience and we just ask for y'all to have a little bit more. We're gonna work on transparency, we're already doing it with transparency, communication to build that trust back up. And we just, uh, we want to thank you all for, for being there and, uh, just moving forward. So thank you.
I will chime in because I've been on both sides with the EDC and the city. And it is like night and day. It is a whole new sense of, uh, partnership. I think we both understand each other better, we both see where we're coming from. And it has really been, and, and several of the board members commented after our last executive session in the last meeting, that it was the best board meeting, the best group meeting that we've had in six years. So, uh, I thank everybody because it's a team effort for us to do anything for the city. I thank all the board, the EDC and the city.
Pushing this button too much. So, and the mayor and I discussed this, so just to, just to kind of talk about, so, for instance, at the beginning of the meeting, Councilmember Corbell spoke under, under public comment in regard to Juneteenth. And so what I'm accustomed to, and I get to do my city manager report and then you don't have a time to make any comments. So mayor and I discussed that, that thought, you know, that would be a time to, you could bring up Juneteenth or other events that you're going to or have gone to. Because I think it's important the community knows that this isn't the only time and place that you do city business. And so if you wish to share that in a limited way, one or two minutes, uh, max, and only if you want to. But him and I, we talked about it and again, I almost feel like I get a special time and you don't as council members. I just think it's a good opportunity for you to be able to say, for instance, Councilmember Corbell, what you did in I just think it's a good opportunity for you to be able to say, for instance, Councilmember Corbell, what you did in the very beginning, and then that's your time, instead of just being a member of the public when it's public to be heard. So that's what, uh, Mayor and I talked about, uh, when he brings that up for, um, conversations at the end of the meeting. And we're happy to put a little item on the agenda at the end that just says council comments, and that way you know what it is and the community knows what it is. So love to hear if you have any different thoughts about that, but otherwise, we'll, uh, put that, um, on the end of the agenda so that you can just take a couple of minutes, should you wish to, to report anything that you wish to. Thank you.
Well, I'll say that, um, I actually attended for the first time the, uh, downtown second Saturday. Usually I'm in my store behind my door, um, I'm looking at Ray and I'm looking at Jimmy, and I usually have quite a few visitors while I'm there. Um, but this was wonderful. I was able to actually attend as a person the car show. I took, uh, my son, my fiance, they loved it. Um, I enjoyed buying from some of the vendors, uh, great, uh, sourdough bread, dill pickles. I mean, it was really fun and I really, really enjoyed it. Um, the men left me because I was enjoying myself too much and spending too much money. So I will agree with what Greg said, kudos to everybody that did the work, it was wonderful. Um, I'm very, very proud of everything that was accomplished. And as far as what I've been doing over the, I just have been having a lot of, um, private conversations in regard to EDC and, and, uh, relationships, and, um, you know, those things are not really, I mean, they are important, you know, and I was on the board until what, um, three weeks ago, I guess. But anyway, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna echo Debbie that there's been a lot of change, a lot of things going forward, a lot of agreements on some things that wouldn't have happened, um, six weeks ago. So I am thankful, very blessed and very thankful and looking forward to the future.
Um, yeah, I did the second Saturday. I, I would say that is my daughter, youngest daughter's favorite thing to do, um, is when that comes around. So, uh, we had a lot of fun Saturday, visited a lot of shops, spent too much money. Um, but trying to help the, trying to help the community, I guess. Um, I, I also had opportunity to, uh, a couple of weeks ago, to go to the hospital ball. And, uh, just, just wanna really, uh, you know, shine a light again on our first responders. You know, I mean, I, I had a daughter unfortunately involved, um, in that horrific C C's accident with all these kids. Um, I'm just happy to report, folks that don't know, um, all the kids, uh, seem to be, uh, on, on a really good road to recovery, um, but it just really meant a lot for the, for everybody there. Um, Chief, thank y'all for being there, um, and, and you know, I just don't think we can thank them enough. Um, cause when things are really, really crazy, they, they're the ones that are jumping in, feet first. And, uh, I just wanna say I appreciate them, and it was a great, great honor to be there, to watch, watch everyone be celebrated. Except for a few of the, uh, I think the police officers that couldn't make it, cause they were on, on duty. So thank y'all if you're hearing this.
All right, meeting adjourned.